Good evening. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order September twentieth, twenty-two regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting and all items that would be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policies for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. There are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorm and courtesy are important elements of effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones and communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken this time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del veinte de septiembre dos mil veintidós. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que sean unidos a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Y si hay alguien aquí que necesita interpretación al español, por favor levante la mano y la intérprete le ayudará en este momento.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comments. Ms. Oliver?
We as a board in collaboration with the superintendent and district leadership are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate you coming to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have an established protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously and to that end, staff will follow up within forty-eight hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being, adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir en la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas, si es necesario, a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento, adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y comunicará con usted dentro de cuarenta y ocho horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará dejándoles saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios. Our first speaker is Michael Downs.
Good evening, board members. My name is Michael Downs. Good evening, board members, superintendent. My name is Michael Downs, seventy-four Rosemont Street in Hartford. And I'm here to reiterate what I brought up in July concerning the fact that, at the most, thirty-five percent of our high school graduates in Hartford go on to post-high-school education, whether it's college or some other form of training or the military. And about sixty-five percent are prepared to hit the streets, one thing or another. And sometimes it's, they get involved in illegal activities. And we're sort of, we're sick of that in the city of Hartford. And we think that the Board should get involved in bringing back something that was part of the school system fifteen years ago. It was eliminated, and that is vocational technical education, family consumer science, as well as art, music, library, and physical education. I realize it's not your fault that all those teachers were laid off fifteen years ago. And then when the state said you have to bring them back, they weren't available. So now it's harder. But we have to put an emphasis on that. And we need to get back into the area of teaching our students the basics in carpentry, electronics, blueprinting and design, graphic arts, metals, plastics, and also how to feed and clothe and transport yourself, which family consumer science teaches you. And so I would say that we should seriously look into funding from the state of Connecticut for that. If it was the state of Connecticut that took it away, let's bring it back. And finally, I still don't see any work done at our school. Thank you.
Richard Demage?
Good evening, superintendent and school board members. My name is Richard Demay, World Languages teacher and a member of the Hartford Federation of Teachers Executive Board as Weaver High School Area Coordinator. Eric Ward, a nationally-recognized civil rights leader, recently wrote an article for the American Educator Journal entitled "You're My Inspiration." In this article, he helps differentiate between equality and equity, as well as diversity, inclusion, and equity. Equality is sameness. Everyone gets the same thing. Equity, on the other hand, ensures that outcomes in the conditions of well-being are improved for marginalized groups and lifting outcomes for all. To put this idea of lifting outcomes for all into perspective, a 2020 study found that discrimination against African-Americans has cost the American economy sixteen trillion dollars over twenty years. Let that sink in for a moment. Sixteen trillion. To effectively pursue equity, Ward differentiates this concept from those of diversity and inclusion. Diversity focuses on quantity, such as the percentages of Hartford Public Schools' students and staff from different racial and ethnic backgrounds. Inclusion is about quality. For example, the quality of educational opportunity provided to students across cultures and identities, whereas equity is about justice. That is, the policies and practices that ensure equitable outcomes. Towards that goal, here are some ideas of policies and practices for Hartford Public Schools to consider. Reopen libraries in every school so that our students and classrooms have access to books, a media specialist, research skills, and additional technology. For any student testing below grade level or experiencing challenges in learning, provide smaller-sized classrooms to give such students the extra attention they need in those subject areas. Increase the salaries of the lowest-wage earners in our district who tend to be disproportionately people of color. Ensure every student takes music and art classes from certified teachers. And that those whose schools have not had this opportunity get additional funding to make up for the loss. This allows every child to fully develop their multiple intelligences and possess competitive skills upon graduation. Recognize the value of our veteran staff and not discount their expertise simply because they're on their individualized journeys in developing technology skills thrust it upon us all from the pandemic. Often, our veteran staff of color are even further marginalized in this area. And finally, reduce the amount of testing and provide students with more instructional time to wonder, imagine, explore, learn, understand, and feel valued. Give our students and staff the justice they deserve. True equity. Thank you.
Hiya, Cynthiane.
Hello, everyone. Board members, superintendent. Ah, I'm here. You know, there's so many things that I have to say. Three minutes would never do it. Never. There's so many sadness. We continue, superintendent boards. We continue to undermine our system of schools. All right? I'm looking at our board agenda. When did that go out? Didn't allow people to get out and come and speak and what's going on in our system. That is wrong, totally wrong. Now, I'm here, superintendent, because I like to find out from you. Do you ever think why you're losing so many good teachers from our school system? I think that's something you really seriously need to think about. Because, you know, everything comes from the top. When the pressure, the intimidation, and everything comes from the top goes into our classroom, how do you expect our teachers to feel? Our staff members in general? They work under pressure, stress, with no support. You know, I had real great feeling the day of, when we had that opening day before school. I felt like, you know, this is a new beginning. But then, the new beginning waves right off because it was not real. It was not real. Our teachers are not feeling it. Superintendent, I've asked you, when you came into this position, meet with your teachers. Find out what they are doing. They are on the front line. They can tell you what's wrong. You can't stay up there and just throw different things at them at all the time. You don't know whether they work or not. You need to hear from them without intimidation. They come and speak, the next day they're told, "Well, you know, you should not have done that." They're reprimanded. That is sad. That is not a good system to work under. As I always told you before, happy principals, happy teachers, make happy kids. You'll get a lot from those teachers. When I look in general at your graduation rate in general and what's happening in our school system, as I said, and I like what the previous speaker says, we are not preparing our children for the future. Yeah, we may prepare twenty-five percent of them, but what about the rest? They're not prepared for the future. They're prepared to be on the street, in the jailhouse. And how do you look and feel about that, superintendent? Because I want to address you because it's your issue. You've got to care about the people that are on the front line so they can do good work. Now, I see where a contract is supposed to be signed, you know, to extend your day. And I thought the evaluation is going to be on October. And usually, people do, you know, do the evaluation and then they sign a contract. Why is this so? The opposite of this. I don't understand all of this. Board members, if you have kids in the system, in the Hartford Public School system, think about it and see what kind of quality education your kids are getting. They are leaving. The ones that can get out, they're getting out. And we're not preparing the rest of kids. I look at all our libraries, most of the school that I've gone to, they have no staff in them. Your library is supposed to be a safe haven for your children at school, and that's not happening. So where is the fluff there? You know, you've got to be proud of the school system, really is proud, when good things are happening, not only when twenty-five percent are achieving and the rest are not. That is not a happy feeling. So I'm asking you seriously to look into it. Respect your teachers. Respect your principals. Give them the way to do things. I mean, look at it. Let's, let's, let them be creative. They're not creative anymore. They're tired. They're worn out because all the things are coming from downtown, they call it. All right? You've got to have confidence in the people that you hire to be principals and teachers. Give them the way so they can spread their wings. Our children are bored because they're not getting what they need. So I'm asking you to seriously look at it. And board members, you need to know what's going on out in the community. I'm a community leader, and I know, I hear everything what's happening in our community. And it saddens me, really saddens me. It's not getting any better. When something is working in your system, when you have school that's working well, don't destroy the program that's in those schools. And it's happening, and it's another sad story. So I'm asking you seriously, when you go to bed tonight, pray to God. Ask him. Open my eyes to see what's happening to our teachers. They're not staying because they don't feel respected, they don't feel supported. So help me with that. Because I would love to talk with somebody that says, "I'd love to be in this school system." When they leave, they always say that. "Oh, my God, what the difference?" Because people respect them out there. So please do that. Do some of that for me, okay? Thank you. Your system will work much better when you try to keep your people. You don't have to go to Puerto Rico to get people. You have a lot of people in this state that can work for us, but they need to be respected. Thank you.
Victor Cristofaro?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victor Cristofaro. I'm the president, president of the Hartford Principals and Supervisors Association. Last year, I stood up here and I spoke about the fall of 2020 when union leaders in HPS came together and formed a coalition representing over twenty-five hundred members. I stood here last year and requested that we work together to create a work environment that we all deserve. What has happened since in the past year? How have we collaborated? Here are some examples. After five years of being told that we cannot suspend, last year administrators were told that that was never the message, that school leaders always had the final decision regarding school suspensions. This is quite shocking, as many of my colleagues pointed out, that their suspensions were overturned multiple times, usually leading to situations getting worse. To address this issue, the district scheduled a thirty-minute meeting that took place right before the Teacher of the Year celebration. Thirty minutes where my colleagues could raise their concerns. Thirty minutes. Since last year, we had learned that in Hartford, if your doctor tells you that you're injured and can't go to work, Hartford expects you to go against your doctor's orders. That's right. The question was asked, if a doctor says that you're not ready to work because your injury has not healed, and the district says you should be back to work, who should you listen to? Who would you listen to? Well, in Hartford, the answer is, listen to your employer. A fact that they're so adamant about that my members receive letters saying, "If you don't show up to work, regardless of what your doctor says, we consider you self-resigned and you no longer work here." Is that what we want in this district? One of the issues that we brought up for five years is the fact that when Hartford people get administrative jobs, after the interview, after they get selected, they get the job in an acting capacity. Now, the district points out that the superintendent has that right, and therefore the district will utilize that right. Now, contractually, if you've gone through the interview process, you should have rights to the job. Makes sense, right? But our people are told, "No. You're going to be acting for the year because we have a right to do that." But here's an interesting caveat. If you're not from Hartford and you come from outside the district, that doesn't apply to you. People hired from outside the district get placed in their jobs permanently. Is that what we want in this district? Well, as the new year started, we all gathered for Admin Institute Ready to Work. And what was Hartford's concern over these meetings? They're concerned about sneakers. Sneakers? They made a point to tell administrators that they were not to wear jeans, sweats, or sneakers. Now, admin PD is the time to roll up your sleeves, get to work, just like I'm sure you've all participated in board retreats. Just administrators in a room working together for four days preparing for the many initiatives of the school year, and the district's concern is sneakers? I don't know how we got here, but I'm running out of avenues for help. This year, I'm asking you, the Board of Education, let's collaborate to create the working conditions that we deserve. Thank you.
Levi Cardulis?
Good evening, Board of Education and all the people in attendance. I only have three things that I want to talk about here today. The first is charter reform. We need, and I've said this We need, and I've said this multiple times, we need a fully elected Board of Education. This district has five appointed board members. Out of nine, right? Nine. So five appointed board members. Each one of you board members who are appointed, you're taking democracy away from poor, black, and brown. People died, gave their lives for us to be able to vote, and you're taking that away. That's extremely cavalier. Second, comprehensive after-school programs, clubs, and youth athletics, like Mike was talking about. Industrial arts and the arts. Programs like Hartford Performs, programs like Spectrum in Motion, Girls for Technology. We need to have youth athletics starting at an early age. We need after-school busing. Superintendent, you make a lot of money. We need after-school busing. I can't stress it enough. Third thing, Carrie Saxon Perry. If you don't know about Carrie Saxon Perry, shame on you. First black woman mayor in New England. I secured a $22,000 Love Your Black grant from Hartford Foundation of Public Giving. Trying to get in the same, I still haven't even had a meeting yet. I have a vendor number already. So does my lead artist. I still can't even meet with the principal. I want to make that sad area look a little bit nicer. I have an idea of the beautification. Ellis Ettravaria is the lead artist to wrap the gymnasium. And we're going to wrap it with a vinyl wrap. It's going to be extremely beautiful. Andre Rochester is engaged in our student so we could put an art installation on the fence. Trinity College, young ladies from Trinity College are working so hard, so hard. They have been conducting interviews, doing research. They're going to continue doing this work so we can have a curriculum to go along with the Carrie Saxon Perry. And I just want to say again, Superintendent, when you first got appointed, I talked about strength and power. It's time for the strength to come through. Because the power comes from that cheer, and we all know that in this room. But it's time for you to have that, that strength that we always talked about. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Wanda Jones.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Lesi Torres Rodriguez and distinguished board members. Local 566 would like to thank you and the chief for initiating a successful summer youth program with the collaboration of Acme Local 818, Evening Facilities Custodial Supervisor and Acme Local 566. This program provided for our inner-city youth job opportunities to support the needs of some of our lower-income families and steer our youth in a positive direction to complete their education. We would also like to thank the superintendent and her cabinet for highlighting and promoting this program on the Hartford Board of Education website. Thank you, Dr. Torres. The union liked to highlight the superintendent's summer initiative rollout. Although we appreciate our food service department, cooks, and workers receiving the summer initiative, we respectfully request that the original language in your email that highlighted custodians as recipients of this incentive be honored. We would also like to request that our food service truck drivers who delivered for the summer program and our facility trades personnel, who worked in every facility during the summer, be rewarded the summer incentive. As Vice President of the Local 566 and a food service worker for over 20 years plus, I believe dignity should be at the forefront of how the food service department leadership treats our members. Without dignity, we will continue to seek a lack of employee retention and many vacancies. Unfortunately, Superintendent, without reform in this area, there can be no renewal and no healing. Thank you, Superintendent and board members, for your time and attention on these matters. I would like to end with a quote by Martin Luther King. "No work is insignificant. All labor that uplifts humanity has dignity." Respectfully, Local 566 Union Vice President.
And our last speaker is John Walton.
Good evening, Superintendent and distinguished board members. I hope you had a good summer. Let me start off on a light note. Superintendent, during your convocation, you reminded me of former President Obama when he was, some of his staff members at the White House were interviewed as to how he acted as president. And one of the things I admired about him, although I disagreed with many of his policies, is that from the people in the kitchen to the highest state leaders, he treated with dignity. And I saw bits and pieces of that when you were in your convocation and you were jumping in between your role as superintendent and being a part of this community. Sometimes we forget that you are a mother. You are a person of this community. And you, that gets blinded by the fact that you hold the position of superintendent. But it was nice to see you in your business suit and sneakers, interacting with the kids and performing. But let me get to the business of 566. Last school year, Local 566 focused on the subjects of reflection that were broken down into three components: character, behavior, and investment. This year, we want to center the discussion to the topics of reform. Superintendent, in your convocation address, you cited two subjects, healing and renewal, which our school community desperately needs, but cannot achieve this without the addition of reform. Reform must take place before the process of renewal and healing. You may be asking yourselves what this means. So let me explain. Dr. Claude Anderson identified education as a mainstay and cornerstone to a thriving community. He also acknowledged education that doesn't address economic conditions of the community will fall short of the ability to heal and renew them. In the late 1960s and early 1970s, industrial trades education was eliminated from public school curriculums. This stripped the ability of our students to be able to build and maintain our community. The reliance on others to do what we need done in our community became the way of life. During the civil rights movement, industrial trade workers funded the civil rights leaders of the time to achieve civil rights success in the United States. As Martin Luther King articulated, there can be no real civil rights success without economic progress. We must speak to the economic needs of our community before all other aspects of education can be implemented. The superintendent and the board must take a hard look at re-implementing the industrial trades back into our curriculum through internships and community partnering with our facilities and food service departments. In addition, bringing back trades curriculum back into our middle school and high schools, which we have seen examples of in other suburban school districts. This would begin the process of providing our students the ability to earn income that helps their families, gives them the ability, and gives them the ability to further their education with limited to no debt. This will also create in our students a personal investment in the community as they would be learning the fundamentals of building and maintaining their educational facilities. The city of Hartford would benefit with this investment as it would increase youth skills as a larger pool of resources for the city. Simply put, if there are more economical opportunities through education, then our students would be less likely to fall victims of negative futures. 85% of Local 566 members are residents of our community and are invested in this progress. We are committed to the reform of our departments and school system. Although we are happy to see some changes in our supervisors and middle management ranks, these changes cannot just be symbolic. Hartford Public Schools must commit attention and efforts to reform these departments' overall direction, which thus far has continued to use a business-as-usual model. Changes that don't address the direction and those who oversee that direction won't be able to reform nor provide the results this community deserves. For example, President Biden's administration floated the notion of putting Harriet Tubman's picture on a $20 bill, which would be a result of symbolism. This does not address the economical inequalities of the communities to which Harriet Tubman was trying to liberate, nor provide that community accessibility to economical resources. Conclusively, the COVID-19 pandemic and other health and safety situations highlighted the importance of facilities and food service operation as parallel to academics. There can be no education of students without the women and men who provide the conditions for health and safety. Without these individuals, educators will not be able to educate, and students will not be able to receive that education. I would like to leave you with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King. "If our economic system is to survive, there has to be a better distribution of wealth. We can't have systems where some people live superfluous and inordinate wealth while others live in abject, debtening poverty." Thank you for your attention, board members and superintendent.
Apologies. One last speaker, Michelle Watley.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I thank you this evening to come out to listen to each and every one of the parent. As a parent to a parent, and I'm talking as a parent, to please think in consideration of our children because this is our next future that come in. I listened to another school, another town, where a child was asking a parent in the board meeting, what could you do for us, the child? And I don't think no parent, none of the parents could not answer her because this was a child aged 16 were pleading to the parent. Superintendent, I'm asking you, as a parent to a parent, one day, you're going to be grandparent, and you're going to move on. But what I'm asking you to ask your staff, what could you do right? If you had to go back and correct things or put things in place, what could you do? That's all I'm asking you. And for the Hartford student, I have a child just started here in Weaver. I had a child went through brutally in Hartford system, and I cry every night because of what my child went through. She's age 19. She wasn't my child, was a child I bring from another state and went through the horrible experience I had. Her brother is in this school, and I have to ask myself, what can I do for protect him in the school system? And I'm asking you, I'm asking each and every one of you as a parent, I'm not coming as what position you all have there as a parent. We need programs to come back in Hartford. We need to train our young children, our young teenagers. We need to train them. We need programs. We need so many things to come out. I remember when they were in Clark Street School, I went through this 31 years ago. What could we do and to bring back some of the program? I'm asking you now, please consider you and your staff to bring back program in Hartford. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. We now move on to the report of the chair. As always, I'll remind at every board meeting, you could find the full committee reports as well as all the attachments and videos in the meeting agenda on Board Docs. As a reminder, that all committee and workshop meetings are livestreamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved to each meeting agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions, please contact Christina Santiago, our board liaison, at csantiagohartfordschools.org. Before I conclude, I do want to share a few highlights with the community. One, as part of Business Agenda Item 4.5, we leveraged the Connecticut Superintendent Leadership Competency Framework and achieved the 89% completion rate for the superintendent's evaluation for Academic Year 2122. I want to thank my colleagues for their engagement and thoughtful feedback during this process. Two, the district has engaged with the prestigious Higher Ed Institute in an effort to expose some of our students to world-class facilities, faculty, and resources. Currently, not at liberty to share the name of the institute, but I'm confident that some of our students will benefit greatly once plans have been finalized. Three, for Business Agenda Item 4.1, the board will host a mini-retreat on October 20th to learn more about the superintendent's discovery relating to the creation of Hartford Public School Foundation. Four, and lastly, with the start of the new school year, I believe we are poised to regain our pre-pandemic momentum and make meaningful strides towards our strategic operating plan goals. On the behalf of the board, we very much look forward to working and engaging with our students, caregivers, community partners, staff, and the superintendent. Thank you. We will now move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Also, as a reminder, that the entire report that I provide is on Board Docs. I usually just pick several of the sections to report on. And I'm going to start, Christine, I don't know if you can share just a, just one data display as it relates to our attendance initiatives and just a recap of some data. So as we began the school year, there certainly is positive momentum, to your point, Chairman, and encouraging signs around attendance. So I'll lift a few trends here. 26 schools have average daily attendance above 90% compared to 19 schools at this time last year. Right, so 26 now, 19 schools last year. The district-wide average daily attendance is just below 90% compared to 81% at this time last year. All grades pre-K 3 through 8 have achieved 90% or better attendance, with the exception of pre-K 4 and Kinder who have 89.5. But if we round it up, it's at 90. Over the same period last year, only our 8th graders had achieved 90% ADA. And then, high school ADA is at 85.5 compared to 81% last school year. We certainly do still have a lot of work to do. But right, this correlation between improved attendance, the comprehensive redesign of engagement teams is promising. School-based teams are, certainly have been kicking their engagement programs into high gear. Some examples, right, Naylor had their first pep rally. Burr has begun their twilight visits to support families. These are visits that take place after school hours. McDonough has opened their, Bear Den Global is shouting out Tier 3 students who came in right the beginning of the school year with yard goat tickets. You name it, there are several innovations across all of our schools. And I do want to thank our ACE teams, our teachers, our staff, our administrators for their diligence and their commitment to not only establishing deep relations, but engaging learning opportunities across our schools. An athletic update, we are still in the process of hiring and looking for coaches, specifically at the middle school level for the fall. We currently have a 58% increase in middle school offerings compared to last fall. All 17 middle schools are expected to have at least one sport, many of them offering two to three. Last year, 12 schools offered middle school fall athletics. And so we are confident that all 17 will be offering that this year. And we certainly have a lot to celebrate at the high school level with Weaver, right, participating in their first varsity football game in several years. And we have our quarterback at S M S A, Daniel Hernandez, that was named the WFAS Player of the Week. Want to highlight our new teacher induction. I know that the year has already started. We are underway, but I want to pause and highlight that out of 172 out of the 224 new teachers hired since July 1st, highlight that out of 172 out of the 224 new teachers hired since July 1st, they were in attendance in our four-day professional learning. And we also had 21 of our student teachers also join in some of that learning. And for new teacher induction, our teachers participated in over 20 sessions, received not only content but also curriculum, training across English Language Arts, Special Education, supports for multilingual learners, learned about some of the technical tools like Power School, Parents' Square, certainly leveraged the opportunity to offer training and informed practices to our new teachers, and of course dove into equity work as well. So I want to thank Dr. Curtis, the team in the Office of Talent Management, and all the other departments because it truly was a collaborative effort. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Now move to the Business Agenda. Business Agenda Item 4.1, Resolution, Hartford Public Schools Foundation. The motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to explore and research establishing a Hartford Public School Foundation and report back to the Board of Education. Do I have a motion? Superintendent?
So our, as many of us are keenly aware of the fact that many of our students have unique challenges that require very targeted solutions, and the pandemic coupled with limited resources has further disenfranchised our community. And we are really thinking about post-COVID funding, how to maintain, sustain our innovative programming strategies and initiatives. We know that we need additional momentum, and we know that the ARPA, the ESTER funding, the relief funding expires in the fall of 2024. So a possible new avenue for us to explore to how to address our financial sustainability strategy is through potentially a creation of a 501(c)(3) foundation. This is something that Chairman and the Finance Committee have talked about for some time now. And so we will engage over the next set of weeks in some research to identify local and even national examples of models as well as potentially other structures, perhaps like a hybrid model that I can present to you all at the upcoming board retreat.
Thank you. I'll open up to discussions and comments.
I have a question.
Ms. Brody?
Is a resolution necessary? Like, I'm trying to understand because so this has been mentioned in a couple committees, but not in a way that is open for questions because we kind of don't know what to ask. So I need to understand the resolution, the need for it, and why research just can't be done. I just, I don't understand the resolution part. And I do want to ask, the superintendent stated, the Chair and some other people, is she saying the Chair of our Board, you, Mr. Reger, or the Chair of something else? She didn't reference whom she was referring to. I've been talking about this for a while.
I'll address that. So in terms of the resolution, specifically as a Board giving the superintendent the go-ahead to actually research and provide input of whether or not a foundation is a viable option for us as a district? The reason for the resolution is because this is something that I think as the superintendent that she needs our approval to move forward in this direction. As it relates to the comment around the Board, or the Chair, rather, I asked the superintendent to further examine the potential of this. This was discussed at several committee meetings, and today what we're voting on is to give the superintendent the authority to move forward in discovery mode, not to create a foundation, this is discovery.
There is also a need to engage in council advisory, and so I can't do that without Board as well.
Have a follow-up?
Ms. Brody?
So we're saying, go ahead, do your research, but at the same time, prior to any anything else, we have not had the platform to even ask questions prior to discovery. It's been mentioned in committee, but it's like, oh, we're not taking questions now sort of thing. So it's just a, I'm so confused on not discussing because we, so we have something set up a month from now to discuss. So no discussion prior to the superintendent going out, prior to her speaking with council, there's not a collective discussion with the Board prior to that. It's only after all of that, then we are able to engage collectively with questions.
So Ms. Brody, I would say that I think there was time to discuss what's being proposed. Also, tonight is another platform to provide questions and comments. I would say I think there's a lot more to be discovered and unwind, which is part of the next, I would say, 30 days that the superintendent's got to take. Again, I just want to reiterate that this is for discovery. So I think a lot of questions may be unanswered and allows the superintendent to go back and find those answers or resolutions.
Okay, so this is something, I'll just say I can't support. I think it's a distraction, and I'm going to tell you why. A week ago, we looked at data, and it was some other, I was, I listened to somebody and they warned, they said, when you get data reports and you hear a lot of growth, 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 that's a smoke screen. We had a million slides on growth, but when we really talked about the progress of our students, there is no category for English Language Arts, math, there's no category that collectively our students are achieving even 25% proficiency. So with that said, we're talking about a 501(c)(3), we're talking, we need to talk about we should be focused on academic achievement, period, and all those things that connect to it. So some of those things that connect to it, I've been saying it forever, speakers have been saying it forever, the way kids are molded and the way they grow, we all, I have just memories, you want to go to school, you want to go to library, you want to learn how to operate in the library, you want to go to music class, you want to be in a Martin Luther King music room. I can remember tapping the wooden sticks and learning that part, art in that. We have some schools that that's not even a position that's open because we're saying we don't have funding for it. Those things that shape and mold a young person, the things that make them want to go to school, the thing that our students of color are, music and art. So I'm just so confused why we're distracted on things like starting a foundation at this moment in time, because at this moment in time, our scores reflect something that I'm embarrassed to look at. It's just, it's a distraction, it's something, and I'll just, I'll end there, but I will not be supporting something because when I hear reports month after month, oh, as a district, we, you know, we presented and we recognized because we're groundbreaking, we're doing this. We can pretend to be groundbreaking, we could pretend to be trailblazers, but at the end of the day, that those scores that were shown to us last Thursday, last Tuesday at our Board Workshop, that is what we reflect. Not all the smoke and mirrors. We need to get back to the business of using the funds to support teachers and what they need to do that shape young people. We're distracted. I'll end there.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. Dr. Schmeling?
Some of the recommendations that we've been hearing in public comments almost every meeting relate to lack of resource and programs that children need that we've not been able to afford. Having a foundation that raises supplemental funds enables us to do some of those programs that people are talking about. The budget is constrained. Having a foundation that identifies sources of revenue that supplement our budget, I think, can be constructive, and I think at least exploring the idea for the next 30 days can't cause any harm. We can ask questions and pursue the detail once we have some recommendations. So I do support the pursuit of the possibility of creating a foundation that will raise money to support the things that we want to do.
Thank you, Dr. Schmeling. Board Member Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that this, the foundation as a concept is interesting. I believe it's premature to be introduced to this forum. I think it was mentioned in a very scant and cursory way at a committee level. I believe we have committee structure to do the work of the school board, and I think a lot of this work should be done at that level. Honestly, I don't think this foundation is ready to be talked about at this level. What you mentioned today should have been mentioned at a committee level. The actual process of, here's what we're going to do, here's how it's going to go, here's how to do the research. Some of those process steps are things you do at a committee level and do the work at that level. I think there are things to discuss at this forum that are more pressing for today. Absolutely think a foundation at some point is going to be needed or some method to sustainably fund the school system after ESTER funds and federal funds kind of dry up. But to me, this work could be done at a committee level, which should be performed. And then when we have a story to tell, then sure, let's let the public know where we're going, what the contours and shape of it is. Okay, that's, so I would hope that this exploration takes place, but I really, really hope that there's sufficient work done at a committee level to really flesh out and explore what this will look like.
Thank you. Board Member Escobar?
Thank you, Chair. So I disagree respectfully with my colleagues. I do agree that this is a step towards the right direction for the Hartford School District. I believe that, I think Bridgeport it was that has a foundation. If you look across the nation, even in the state, there are other foundations who have been able to leverage the foundation to be innovative, to get out there and get the resources that our kids need, that our families need, that our teachers need, and this is another way that we won't be constrained. As my colleague here said, the budget is constrained, right? We have line items, the foundation gives us the ability to be more flexible, to tackle those issues that our community is facing in a more innovative, creative way. If Hartford District is going to be one of the best districts in the state that I know it can be, we need to be innovative and creative, and I strongly believe this is a way to do it. And I do agree, though, that it needs to, the work needs to be done at a committee level, and I am the Chair of the Family Community Engagement, and so I'm looking forward to working with the superintendent and her team and having those conversations in the month to come and exploring that. So I will put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Bella?
Thank you. Also agree with Yehira on the exploration, and I also believe that in transparency, I think the public should know what we're looking into and what rocks we're turning under and looking under. I don't think we have the luxury of leaving any options on the table for the city of Hartford, both now and in the future, and I think the foundation positions us to receive funding from national, you know, education foundations that have massive, you know, not one foundation can pay for everything, but certainly a few, and strategic investments could help us along the way. So I am all for exploring every avenue of revenue for our children.
Seeing no further comments, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to explore and research establishing a Hartford Public Schools Foundation and report back to the Board of Education. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Abstentions? The ayes have it. Item 4.2, Contract Renewal, Community Schools Contract. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the contract with the agencies listed on the item for the term defined in the contracts ended June 30th of 2023 at the cost not to exceed as listed. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Just a little background and reminder for our community that our community schools are schools that partner with families and community organizations, specifically reflect the local needs and assets and priorities of that community, rethink and rebuild relationships based on trust and respect, and create and implement a shared vision of student and school success. The core partnership components are in alignment with our strategic plan, family and community engagement, collaborative processes and practices, and integration, integrated student support structure, and the expanded learning opportunities. The community school coordinating agencies are Active City, Blue Hill Civic Association, Boys and Girls Club of Hartford, Career Resources, Catholic Charities, and the Village for Children and for Families and Children. And they're going to continue to, they seek to continue to coordinate and maximize not only public but also nonprofit and private resources, right? It's the brading of those resources to deliver the critical services to not only our students but also to their families. Coordinating agencies also provide more than one type of service to students and the community. Some services are very unique to each school community, such as, right, some schools have mental health and clinical supports that are offered to students and families. And the community schools are evaluated based on the community school standards through school site visit tool that Chief Blackburn and her team can speak to if needed.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Question?
Board Member Brody?
So in committee, in a couple committees, I stated, I wanted to know the work that was done. I want, no, I wanted to know the plans that the organization had, like what they were going to deliver on, and I wanted to know what the results were, and that would allow me to make an informed decision on voting for continuation. I asked for that, you can roll back the tape, that is not what I got. I don't understand. I really just don't understand. I have, I respect every organization presented. It's not personal in any kind of way, I'm just asking for that, and I don't understand how, as a Board Member if I'm asking for data, that I don't receive what I asked for. I'm unable to know what, if a result did not come to fruition, I need to learn to understand from, I can ask a question to the organizations who are represented tonight, like what was your struggles? What more support did Hartford, could Hartford Public Schools provide? What happened with families that kind of swayed you to take another approach? I can't ask any of those questions because I don't have the data that I requested in committee.
So Superintendent?
There is also a need to engage in council advisory, and so I can't do that without
So, uh, Superintendent, I'll let you address that, but I do believe we have represented from our community partners here today.
Chief Blackburn is here as well and can speak to the request.
But to Ms. Brody's, um, first comment around data, I would like for you to address that. One of you.
Mr. Chairman, is it okay for me to respond?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening to all. And thank you. So the pieces that were provided, and if that is not what you were expecting, we can go back and look to compile additional components. But what was provided is the layout based on the outcomes that our community providers share that they're going to do. So what was provided, if that is not what you were looking for, we can go back to the drawing board and look to provide additional information. What was provided was the community school site visit template that is used for standards, and that is what we are working with when we have our monthly meetings with partners to determine if they are in fact meeting what they say they're going to do. Um, we also provided, um, the framework of how that plan is compiled in alignment with the strategic goals. So again, I have no problem publicly, publicly saying if that is not what you were looking for, I do apologize for that, and will work with the board assistant to get you what you need. But I'm more than willing to invite partners up if there are particular questions that need to be answered. So we do have all of our partners, Active City, uh, Blue Hill Civic Association, um, Career Resources, Catholic Charities, The Village, and the Boys and Girls Club of Hartford here with us. All of our agencies are here. So if you don't mind joining me?
Uh, thank you. As they walk up, uh, Board Member Escobano?
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Okay, great. So I also want to clarify that during that meeting, um, I requested all of my colleagues to send in their questions or concerns that they had about any of the CBOs, um, to be sent in the next day. So that way Chief Blackburn and her team had an opportunity to review those questions in advance to send all those answers. And I can concur that we did receive the, some data. Um, but I guess, again, it wasn't exactly what my colleague here was requesting. But I do want to make it clear to everyone here that every colleague who had a question had the opportunity to ask. And if there were follow-up questions, I requested that they be submitted at a certain time period in order to ensure Chief Blackburn and her team had enough time to answer and get those answers back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from my colleagues?
Follow-up, Ms. Chair.
Excuse me, sorry. Board Member Brody, you have the floor.
So, um, I appreciate you all coming. I've worked with some of you probably personally. My children have. I appreciate it. I have a, my youngest is at the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, I've probably every, um, and she goes there right after school on the bus. Um, so I appreciate your work. It's more than, um, is more than me, I, the data is not to say, look, you didn't make it. The data is to say, what is the struggle and how could we be better? What are we not doing? What, what do we not see? That is all, because we only can make informed choices or we only can get better, um, and continue to thrive through looking at data. And we all know that, right, in a nonprofit world? We, that's how we show, and we learn from our struggles. So I don't have any questions from you today because I was not presented with what I asked for in committee, and that was data on what you did, um, last school year. I appreciate your work more than you'll ever know, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Um, along those lines, um, I'm actually interested, um, just based on your experience, what are some of those pain points or things that we could prove upon? Anyone could fill that question?
Good evening, and thank you for having us. Aldwin Allen, The Village with Family and Children. As we talk about pain points, I think, um, we've heard, um, a lot tonight, um, what people's experiences are. One of the realities is, as you are running a community school, your job is to integrate fully into the school. Our concept is to supplement, not supplant. So as you're talking about ACE teams, as you're talking about Twilight visits, as you're talking about open houses, as you're talking about bringing resources into the school that allows children to have a greater focus, um, things that align more with vocational studies, things aligned with post-secondary education, we're bringing those things into the schools, and we partner with the institution to do so. So when you talk about the stresses and the challenges, it is the same. It is that if we're running these programs during the day, and we do have, as you're looking at community school, I want us to really keep in the concept, the construct. Because if you measure a community school, which begins at the start of the school day and ends at 6:00 PM, sometimes 6:30, and depending on special activities and engagements, it may go beyond that, you have to be very clear about the measure. So if you're talking about implementing activities during the day, we struggle with the same thing the administration struggled with because we sit side by side with them, because there's an intentionality around instructional time, uninterrupted instructional time. Some of the funders that we work with and we look to braid funding, they don't want to exist within an after-school frame. So we meet with principals, we engage, we talk about those pieces, as we're looking at inviting parents in and having them develop relationship with the institution. And I want to be specific as I say these things, because when you have a community school, the job of the community school lead organization is to integrate seamlessly. If we're walking through the school and a parent says, oh, the village did that, oh, Blue Hills did that, it's a problem, because our responsibility is to build a relationship with the institution. If we create scenarios where there are heroes from the outside, it devalues the school. So as you're looking at a well-functioning community school, it is integrated in every aspect of that school. Therefore, all of the struggles that are inherent with running that school day are, by its very nature, the same problems and struggle that the community school has. So if you're talking about issues that may exist with custodians, if you're talking about issues that may exist with security, if you're talking about issues that may exist with transportation, all of the same woes become ours, because our responsibility is to exist within a school frame, to work with the school principal, with the construct of supplement, not supplant, with the intentionality to provide wraparound services that allows the institution to focus on academic growth and development while we provide the wraparound services that help underpin that process.
Thank you. And anyone else like to, like to provide perspective?
So thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the question was, what were the pain points, correct?
That is correct.
So, um, I echo, uh, the sentiments by Aldwin, Mr. Allen from The Village. By the way, my name is Nick Lebron from Catholic Charities. I think the way that I would best describe it is it's similar to, I like to use analogies to frame, uh, the conversation. And so what I would, the analogy I would use here is that oftentimes, um, when you're sailing in the sea, you can be much more nimble when you have a smaller boat. But Hartford Public Schools is a large entity. It has more staff and employees than the city of Hartford. So I liken that to a battleship. It is hard to do a U-turn with a battleship in the sea. It takes time. And so with the, the detail that Mr. Allen shared, it's similar in that way in that the ability to be nimble, uh, presents difficulties. Not saying that you can't do it, um, you can, but, um, along with any institutions, any organizations, whether it be at the state, the municipal, federal, or local level, there are things that you have to go through to make sure that everything is aligned. Meanwhile, whatever you're trying to be nimble to is happening, right? And so therefore, it is reactionary in nature, by design. And this is not a Hartford Public Schools specific thing. This is a national broader landscape. So, um, I can give examples about that, but I don't want to, because I don't think that there's anyone to blame except the fundamental structures that we were all inherited with. And I think that that's the difficulty.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Brother Kelvin Lovejoy, Blue Hill Civic Association. And I'm actually here at Weaver High School. Uh, this is an extra-long day for me, as I got to school this morning at almost eight o'clock. And, um, you know, I think, I'd really like to speak from the front line. And although I am a supervisor of the director, you know, when we talk about the community schools model, you know, it's all hands on deck. We roll up our sleeves, we dive in. And wherever our school needs help, wherever our young people need help, wherever our families need help, that's where you'll find us at. And so literally being in classrooms, being in hallways, being in cafeterias, um, breaking up small skirmishes even before they start, building the relationships with our young people that make it possible for the IQ to increase so that the EQ can be strengthened. It is really, really a vital part that we play inside of the school. And I smile because I think about something that I heard today, uh, from one of my colleagues. And one of the things that we're, you know, teaching our young people when many a time, as you know, they, they speak that teenage language. And so one of the things that we've established is that, you know, instead of using certain kinds of words, we, we've identified those words as baby language. So we don't want to use baby language. And amazingly enough, you know, one of my colleagues who was in a classroom this morning, uh, as we were speaking in a meeting after school, he said, you know what? I heard some students say, when they heard another student use quote unquote a bad word, that we don't use baby language here. I said, I know that we're doing something. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Chantel Gray, Director of Specialized Initiatives and Partnerships at the Boys and Girls Club of Hartford. I would just like to recommend, um, having a lot of the community-based organizations offer programming on Saturdays. At our other locations, we are open, you know, until 8:00 PM. We're servicing over five or more children on our club sites. So the only pain that I would like to recommend, if we're able as a community-based organization, to offer Saturday Academy. At the Boys and Girls Club, we have six pillars that we align with academic success, health and wellness, character and leadership, esteem, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and workforce readiness. And we don't do it alone at the Boys and Girls Club. We have other partners. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sandra Plessinger from Career Resources. And I would like to also recommend, and I think this will be my only recommendation, that more agencies can join the efforts of community schools. Because last year was our first year in a community school, and it was such a great experience for the students, for me personally, for all our staff at Career Resources, to be able to see the changes that we were able to accomplish in such a short period of time with the students. And we, mine personally, I don't have the data like quantitative, but the qualitative data, it was amazing just to see the students that didn't want to do public speaking at all, to, at the end of the year, being the one volunteering to do their morning announcements, you know? And it's not just one organization, it's all of us working together and meeting and really working towards the student in the academic portion and in the social emotional learning. Thank you.
Board Member Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, your, your comments are inspiring, and the work you do is impressive. I've had the opportunity to, uh, visit, um, McDonough and would love to visit other sites. Um, the, the transformation at McDonough is impressive, and it left me wanting to understand that working relationship as, I think, Mr. Allen, the first speaker, um, that is, that it's seamless is so essential to a success. And so, uh, I am just impressed with what you do. Um, my, my comment is, I guess, at a board level, um, continuous improvement is the thing that we can potentially offer you. I think the timing of this feedback is what I would like to see different. Um, it'd be great to have you come in throughout the year, particularly towards the second half of the year, because the, the comments you've made about more participation and the expansion to Saturday, I think timely received information is something that we can act on. And so I would really like to see that change put in place where we can hear from you in the second half of the year, where it can then, um, we can work with Chief Blackburn or others to see how to improve the program for the upcoming year. And so you can feel, I think, your voice responded to and the offerings we allow you to do in the upcoming season.
Board Member Escobano?
It's great to see you guys, and I thank you for your hard work. Um, so I just want to also emphasize, we are making some changes to the FCE Committee. I will be meeting with Chief Blackburn there. We want to hear from you. We haven't figured out the timeframe more than just in the middle of half the year. So we will keep you posted as soon as I meet with Chief Blackburn. We are gonna be making some changes to the FCE Committee to make it more efficient in order to have those voices at the table for us to be aware of what's going on, some of your challenges, what we can do at this level to support you. So I look forward to building and strengthening that relationship with you guys.
Thank you. Board Member Pastor Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, my, my comments and sentiments are very simple. Just thank you all so much for the work that you have done and continue to do. Most of your organizations are, are respected deeply. Um, when I get a chance to go by schools and engage with young people and go by various community events, you all are represented there with young people. And I just want to say that that is absolutely amazing. Uh, again, deeply respect everyone, probably in, in relationship with Brother Lovejoy more often, just due to the work that we further do in North Hartford. But to see those young people come together for a day of cleaning, uh, on Barber Street, um, from Hartford Public Schools was an amazing thing to see. Hundreds of young people flooded the street. And a lot of young people don't go to the same school, but they come from different neighborhoods. And to see them respect each other in a very territorial space with no incidents on Barber Street on a Saturday morning, I just want to say that, that, that is amazing. So I'm sure all of you are doing work like that, and I look forward to partnering with you all in various capacities. But that's just one partnership that I've actually seen come to light, uh, in, in, in work. Active City, I've heard that name a lot around sports, and I'm, I think there's a lot more territory you all can, can grasp as it pertains to sports in Hartford, as we don't have certain things that we, uh, that other towns have. But your name continues to come up. So again, just thank you to everyone, and I appreciate the work that you all do.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with the agencies listed on the item for the term defined in the contracts ending June 30th of 2023 at the cost not to exceed as listed. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item 4.3, Curriculum Associates, Elevation Platform. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Curriculum Associates Elevation for the term defined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at a cost not to exceed eighty thousand, eighty thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Superintendent?
Twenty point five percent of our students are identified as multilingual learners. So Elevation is a comprehensive data management platform that organizes student data for our multilingual learners. It provides progress monitoring processes. It does house not only state but also federal mandated paperwork, and enables accurate reporting and supports instructional planning for, um, multilingual learners and online paperless platforms. Some of the things that, um, the cost is associated with, Elevation Platform engages school educators in Elevation Platform engages school educators in not only academic, but also in linguistic data that is specific to multilingual learners. It does integrate, updates nightly in alignment with Power School, and it provides detailed reports for our educators. And it saves parent and team meeting notes in one place. The student data is easily retrievable from other districts that are also using Elevation, which helps for students that might be moving in and out of our district.
Thank you. Comments or questions for my colleagues? Board Member Walker?
Thank you. Two points, I guess. One, I guess I'd ask superintendent, so is this platform going to support kind of dual-language instruction? Does that exist in the district, and is this going to support that? I.e., can Spanish-language learners learn in Spanish while they're also learning English? And this one support that?
No, this data, this platform is specifically a data management tool.
Okay. Then, follow-up question. This year, I would like to be able to get feedback from teachers or instructional staff as to how the tool is working. Occasionally, I get feedback on tools that somehow don't quite deliver to staff as they think they would. So I'd like to be able to get some feedback as we go through the year about how it's working.
I have a question.
Board Member Brody?
Did we have any staff that are going to be utilizing this system? Test it, or anything to that?
Yes, Dr. Nagron, if you can speak to that, please.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, Ms. Brody, last year, what we did, as we learned about the tool, we actually ran a pilot with many of the teachers who normally would engage in doing the level of looking at information and data and assessing to progress manage multilingual learners. So we had them do the pilot, and based on their feedback, which was favorable, that is when we then decided to try to expand it and bring it forward to the entire district.
Thank you. I had a second question.
Board Member Brody, go ahead.
Because over time, we've seen other contracts with data management. So how are we thinking about all of those other contracts and what they do? Do they complement each other? Are they all just segmented? How? Because we've had some other data tools as far as... And I don't want to put you, no, I'm not putting you on the spot, Dr. Nagron, but something to think about, like a follow-up, right? All those different places that we've had where data here, data there, how are they working together? Or do they just simply work separate? That might be a reality, but that's something I would like to...
So I do not have all the answers, but the answer that I can share is that we're always looking, whenever we're looking at these tools, how are they compatible with Power School? Because as you know, that is our main source of being able to pull data. So that allows for anybody that's going to be using it to access it that way so that it's readily accessible.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Board Member Bella?
Good evening. My question's really just around who's going to own the data. Is it consistent with other data tools where we would have access to that data? And should we need to migrate, have access to historical data in this tool?
Can you answer?
Sure.
So yes, we do own the data. It's our own data. All we're doing is, we literally, right now, collect all that information, old-fashioned, like through paper, and this is just going to make it more efficient.
Seeing no further questions or comments, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Curriculum Associates Elevation for the term defined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at the cost not to exceed $80,175. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Item 4.4, Revision Learning. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Revision Learning for the term defined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at the cost not to exceed $448,880. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Superintendent?
Yes, and I'll actually call Dr. Nagron back up to speak to, or Chief Avila, for the continuation of the work which is in support of our instructional leadership with our school leaders. And we also have Mr. Patrick Flynn, who's here representing Revision Learning as well.
Can you, Chief Avila, can you please give us just a brief description of the item?
Good evening. So over the last, I believe, more than seven years, Revision Learning has been working with our organization to support new leaders and building their capacity to provide effective feedback to teachers. And so when a new administrator comes into the, in Hartford Public Schools, they run a three-day session with Revision Learning so that they learn the process well and able to implement it. Last year, Revision Learning started working with Hartford High in regard to the Commissioners Network and has really supported the process in building the capacity of the instructional team as well as the teachers. This coming year, McDonough, who is a feeder school into Hartford High, and part of the Commissioners Network plan is to build that feeder school into Hartford High so that there can be a strong through-line, has revision learning working with McDonough School as well. Additionally, the work will also support our PDAC Committee and the work that's happening between the Department of School Leadership and the Department of Academics, and will support professional learning for our Executive Director of School Leadership.
Thank you. Do I have any comments or questions for my colleagues? Board Member Walker?
Yeah. Yeah. Chief Avila, can you just break that down? I wasn't on this particular committee, and in a more simpler fashion, like, is this tool going to support coaching between teachers? Or how does it work? Because now that you say it's going to work as a system between McDonough and Hartford Public High School, now I'm a little lost as to, how's this all going to work? What does it actually do?
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Flynn, who can give you the actual details.
Okay.
No, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board Members. You know, the thing to start with is that our work in schools, and in particular, this year in McDonough and at Hartford Public High School, is all about creating the conditions for school leadership and teachers to do their work, right? It's as simple as that. What we believe very sincerely, and what we've applied at Hartford High last year, and we'll get the opportunity to then do it at McDonough this year, is that a collaborative, shared decision-making model that is driven around instructional practice and supports teachers, especially in teacher-to-teacher, peer-to-peer interaction around instructional practice, is your best avenue to that success. So we, in particular, focus in on instructional leadership team development, where we have teacher-leaders engaging with the principal and with their administrative cabinet to support instructional improvements inside the classroom. Now, that is really what we pushed out at Hartford Public High School. And the focus around all of that is about improving an opportunity for feedback to get to teachers. Feedback for growth, feedback for improvement. And that has to become more cohesive, is what it really comes back down to. So what we're looking to do is continue to provide the services direct to the instructional leadership teams, both now at McDonough and at Hartford Public High. Look for that 6 through 12 potential progression and vertical alignment of those services in order to really continue to improve in that. Last year, we had great success, in particular, with the teacher-to-teacher component to all of that. Most of the data that we have that supports all of that really comes in the form of teacher and administrator data showing improvements in instructional practice through their feedback.
Okay. If I have a follow-up question. So break it down a little bit more. What, someone share with me, for instance, in, in an old-school way, what was effective is an in-school coach. So if I'm a young teacher, I improve my instructional proficiency because someone more experienced comes in and gives me feedback. And then there's a feedback loop. I can look again. I tell you what you got, what you didn't quite get. And then somehow, there's some trust built up, and then eventually, that younger teacher becomes more proficient through that relationship. So is this tool kind of augmenting that or facilitating that?
It's augmenting it. It is providing an opportunity for not only an administrator-to-teacher based feedback model to take place, but a teacher-to-teacher based model to take place. It's providing an opportunity for the comparisons of data outcomes, right, for, in our instructional practice, not to just be one-sided or coming down from an administration. It really provides an opportunity for teachers to inform the work of other teachers. So it is augmenting, it is supplementing the feedback that is coming from an administrator.
Okay. If I can do one last comment. That sounds really exciting. I would like to see that, then Chief Avila, tracked and see what the outcomes are. And what I'm saying is, because if it really works in this space, let's expand it. Because one of the things that I kind of sense is the way we kind of do it right now, where there's an evaluation, and a teacher gets something on a cheat-a-paper, and they're left to try to figure out how to make life better for themselves as a teacher. If this is better, then let's have it be better for the district.
I can't agree with you more. And I would say that, you know, both of our books are focused in on that exact topic of making sure that we increase the amount of feedback towards a culture of learning within our schools, and that component is an extremely important part of it. We do have data from Hartford Public High, mostly, once again, teacher and administrator-based data that really shows and demonstrates where and how improvements started to occur within the classrooms as a result of that model.
Thank you.
Board Member Escobado?
Thank you, Chair. I would be interested in knowing, so in this past academic year, obviously, COVID hit, everything was a hot mess. But I want to know, what were some of those challenges for the administrators and the teachers? I would like to get a sense of their feedback that they provided you in terms of how helpful this was for them.
I think that the challenges really revolve around two core ones, and I'm going to give you the one that we always talk about, that is time, right? And the opportunity to make sure that we have the right structures in place to get the time for those instructionally-driven conversations to occur. So that tends to be the first and foremost one that's brought up. I would suggest that feedback itself is a challenging process, right? Giving, receiving feedback. It's fundamentally not easy to receive. It's also fundamentally not easy to give. And as a result, much of the training and much of the focus of our coaching and our support for those teachers, as well as for those administrators, was developing a model for that feedback to have that impact that it was. So I would say time, feedback itself, becomes a challenge for those folks. Because we have, unfortunately, sometimes, I heard this phrase earlier in one of the schools, the culture of nice. Like, we like to be nice to each other, and feedback sometimes has to be directive in that support, so.
So I'm assuming this school year is gonna, that's going to be a little bit different, right?
It has to be. You know, and I would say yes, because ultimately, what you're starting to see now is a comfort level based on core dispositions of those who provide and give and receive feedback. And we've established those dispositions pretty well within Hartford Public High School. We'll be introducing those into McDonough. And as a result of that, we're starting to see a comfort level with that providing and receiving to the point in which feedback is about our formative growth, about informing how and when we will get better at what we do. And I think that that's really key.
One last comment slash question. I'm all about professional development and creating that pipeline of teachers to become administrators internally, right? That's really important. I apologize. One of the things I would like to see, maybe it was in the Teaching and Learning Committee, and I apologize I wasn't there, but I would love to hear directly from some of the admins and teachers on how great it has been using this tool and how we can continue improving that throughout the district. That would be my only recommendation.
Absolutely. I'm sure we can make that happen.
Thank you.
Board Member Ledger?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. I have a question with regards to the observations, the people in observations. Is that better? I'll use the seven. Is that better? Okay. Thank you so much, Chair. Good evening. The question that I have is with regards to the tool that you're using and communication with the teachers and the feedback. Are there metrics that you're following? Or is there a certain type of rubric that teachers have the expectations that are set before them? And how much time would this be during planning time, common planning time, professional development with the entire school, where the feedback would be reviewed? And also, I'm sorry, one more question. Would this be, you know, limited to subject, the subject matter, or grade level, things like that?
So to answer the first question in regards to the model, could you just repeat that, because I didn't quite catch all of it?
So I'll give you an example. So as an educator, if you have science teachers, so if you have a group of science teachers or special teachers, special subject teachers, mathematics, history, do you have feedback based, limited to those educators as opposed to general academics?
So the entire rubric and entire model is based on your HPS instructional vision. So we start and we end with the instructional vision as the guidepost. So while it's not evaluative, informative, when a teacher is giving feedback to another teacher, it is focused still on those elements of your instructional vision that drive your entire instructional program. So the rubric and the criteria are very clear, made very clear with the teachers because it is your vision and it's what we've been teaching towards. In regards to the timing, you asked about, you know, when this occurs. This is a position which I've always admired about the instructional leadership team, is it's after-school, it's focused conversations and dialogue twice a month to really focus in on what are we learning from our walks and what we're seeing inside our own building by department so that we can, and it's every department, so it's across all subject areas. And they're providing each other with that rich, rich information to then design, co-design collaboratively with our team as well as with the administration, the professional learning that's going to be provided to support in a responsive way what we're learning and seeing inside those classrooms.
Board Member Ledger?
I think, Chief.
I just wanted to add that the instructional vision is aligned to state standards. And so that is also providing the capacity to build up that we are meeting state standards.
Thank you. I have one more question. How heavily is this weighed on the teacher evaluations? Or is it? Oh, I'm sorry. How heavily is this information weighed on the teacher evaluations?
This is not evaluative at all. This is informative information to build capacity, but it is not evaluative.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Bella?
It's just a simple question. Just, again, really simple question. Does this ultimately support teachers?
Yes.
That's my life. Yes, absolutely. It is all about developing a, as I said, a collaborative, shared model that supports directly instructional improvements in the classroom and can be directly tied to increases in teacher efficacy, so absolutely.
And the only other thing that I will add is the fact that we want our students to grow, but we also want our staff to grow. And it's important that we provide those opportunities for our staff as well as we provide them to our students.
Seeing no further comments or questions, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Revision Learning for the term defined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at the cost not to exceed $448,880. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Moving on to item...
Aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? Does, the ayes have it? Moving on to item 4.5, approval of the superintendent contract extension. The motion that the Hartford Board of Education approves the superintendent, approves Superintendent Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez request to extend her employment contract for additional year term through June 30th of 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I will now open the floor to questions or comments from my colleagues. Board Member Escobado?
Thank you, I'm gonna read off, so ignore, I apologize if I'm not making eye contact with the audience, I had to just write down all my thoughts, as this is a very important vote, and I don't take this, anything we vote on here on the board very lightly. This district, just like many others, has faced unprecedented challenges that has impacted progress of our district. As you know, I am an elected official, I'm not one of the appointees, and many of my constituents are not happy with superintendent's performance and with the direction of the district is heading towards. I hope my fellow board members and superintendent are taking the voices and concerns of our constituents very seriously. Many, many people want me to vote no today, and I understand why, but I also know we face unprecedented times with the COVID pandemic. The past couple of years have been a challenge across the board for our staff and students, and you've been a victim of that too, Superintendent. I want each of you to know that this decision that I'm making today was not an easy one for me, because at the end of the day, the people who are most impacted by our decisions here are our kids and our families. There is no denying that we have a lot of work to do as we start to recover from COVID. I have high and realistic expectation, and I expect progress. We will hold you, Superintendent, accountable at every level when we review your evaluation, just like how I am going to be held accountable by my constituents based on my decisions here on the board, because guess what? I am just as responsible for this district as we all are here. I know that our district can be, I know that our district can be one of the best in the state, and Superintendent, I want you to know that I'm taking another leap of faith with you to lead us for the next two years. This is an opportunity for you, Superintendent, and all of us in the city, to move closer to that reality of being one of the, being the best in our state, and I want the opportunity to be a partner in helping you grow and implement the changes our community is asking for and deserves. One of those ways, improving our climate and culture for our staff and family. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Escobado. Any other comments or questions for my colleagues?
I have a comment.
Board Member Brody?
So if this was a, a vote that would be like, are we executing the contract as far as like our superintendent returning next year, that's a different type of conversation, right? But I have to consider, are we at a place where we're comfortable with two years or another year to see how it go, but we're, tonight we're voting on to extend beyond the two years to add a third year, which the superintendent has the right to ask for every year. I believe we have a superintendent that's more than capable to run our school district, but I'm perplexed in a way, when I look at the hard data, the hard data is, is a struggle for me, because it spells that we are not doing good as a school system, that we are not delivering what our children deserve, and unfortunately, when we look at the school system as a whole, we have a superintendent that is in charge of our school system, many parts, but definitely our leader, right? So my vote tonight will just reflect that data, because that, that's, that's exactly what I have to, to go off of, and, and that is exactly why people go to the ballot box and vote for Board of Education members, that's, that's what they're expecting us to do, to make sure we are holding our only one employee accountable for the results that are delivered through Hartford Public Schools.
Thank you, Board Member Brody. Any additional comments or questions from my colleagues? Board Member Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yes, Madam Superintendent, you have had a year of a lot of action, you've wrote out a lot of plans, and you've been continuing to execute your DME for the district. Now, this past year has represented five years, and in my mind, in the mind of many of my constituency, five years is sufficient time to make some determinations on where the district is going, that, that data isn't where we want it to be, this is not a vote on the superintendent keeping their job, the superintendent has her job for the next two years. By state statute, superintendent cannot have a contract beyond three, and so the vote tonight is to whether to give her max contract or a max extension, right? I want to impress upon the leadership to drive more changes, I think there's a keen opportunity to reach further out into the instructional staff, get them to buy more into the DME, at this point, it's rolled out, I don't think we can achieve this assessment in this district unless we get instructional staff to really buy into it, and then where, where they can't buy into it, we, we're going to need to make some changes, because we can't progress unless those who are, who are in the classroom, those who are our community partners, are totally bought in and totally executing this program. So to me, this vote to me is one that is either going to press for more change or press for more urgency, or we're going to say, gee, things are fine as they are, and so I would hope that we really are producing a decision tonight that is leveraging every tool that we have towards higher excellence and to more urgency in making improvements.
Board Member Oliver?
Thank you, so I just want to acknowledge that, as probably one of the only board members who've been here with the superintendent over this five-plus-year journey, that the pandemic is not an excuse, but it is a reality, and there were things that our superintendent put in place, and quite honestly, we were building momentum, and I was feeling good about it, and especially as a Hartford resident, born and raised and went to this high school and graduated, and got to go to an Ivy League college because of this school system, to actually have my peer in the same class, happened to be Hartford High, but to be able to be our superintendent who was committed, and it was heartbreaking to watch a lot of that stuff just dismantle in front of our eyes. That said, I'm very supportive of the superintendent, I will be voting yes tonight, and we've had very, I think, transparent conversations about our expectations of the superintendent, and that, yes, we continue to be in recovery mode, and people are saying the pandemic is over, and we have high expectations, but I want to acknowledge that, yes, it's about student achievement, and we were feeling good about a lot of stuff, and we have some work to do, I don't, at least for me, I'm not ignorant of that, and what I have found is solid leadership in, in our superintendent, we will continue to work and collaborate and always do continuous improvement, we always have opportunities to improve, and we'll continue to have those transparent conversations, and we welcome people to share their thoughts with us, as well as share our thoughts when we're in those committee meetings and other venues where we're going to have really deep conversations. But bottom line, I just want to acknowledge that we were building some good momentum that, quite honestly, 2020 started erasing, and we started going backwards. So I want to thank the superintendent for her leadership, I think there's a lot of supports that went beyond the classroom, that she also had to leave, quite frankly, as part of our community, and I look forward to her continued leadership in that space and collaboration with our internal staff and external partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Bello?
I guess not to belabor this part of the agenda, but I echo sentiments of my colleagues, both appointed and non, you know, I don't see the distinction, I think everybody who takes this seat takes this seat seriously, and so, you know, as a person that was appointed, but also as a Hartford resident, as a, as a, as an aunt to kids who go to this district, as a board member, you know, this decision to vote for the extension, you know, came with a lot of thought, and I think, to sum it up, I believe that, I've, I remember being in the school district when this seat, the superintendent's seat was a revolving door, and we suffered for it, generations suffered for it. This superintendent, and, and as a board, I think, take the responsibility to do, to make achievement the first and foremost outcome of any student, all students in the Hartford Public School systems, and very seriously, and I know that the audience does as well, but I do say that the factors that lead to my decision to vote for this extension is really around the words commitment, commitment to excellence, commitment to improvement, the willingness to confront difficult challenges and, and the unforeseen, the commitment to our students, and as a partner, a CBO, I want, I want to see more of those partnerships flourish, and this is all feedback that obviously will happen in, in further discussion, and, and we roll our sleeves up with that as well, or I, I roll my sleeves up with that, but I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Board Member Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman Rigger, and I, I share the sentiments of my colleagues, this particular vote has been something that has just really been a part of, part of my day, and it's interesting to hear the various perspectives on how people think and feel about our superintendent and feel about our school system, and I share the sentiment with Board Member Yvette, because you're appointed doesn't mean you take this, this position less seriously. As for myself, I'm committed to Hartford and committed to the school system and committed, just beyond committed, on so many different levels, so this is not just a opportunity for me, this is something that I consider as real work and service in giving back to my community. And the one employee that I, I do manage, I have seen overcome so many different, various impossible obstacles, personally, I've seen her and her staff take on so many things that no other school district deals with. You know, most of you know, I grew up in Rocky Hill Public Schools, and some people say that those schools are way better than Hartford schools. Well, I have to say that in my experience in speaking to the young people, and knowing the different various things that our young people go through, I think that our school system has responded to the best of its ability with the resources that we have, and I just want to applaud the superintendent and her staff for that, it is not an easy job, being a community organizer who would pack rooms like this out on educational issues and having the opportunity to sit on the other side and to get a full understanding of what the role of superintendent does, and her staff, and the teachers, and the various different levels of support. We're not where we should be, but we are headed in a direction that I think that we can all be proud of if we just give it time. If you think that 2020 was just going to roll by and we weren't going to see the effects of it, you are deeply misguided. So I, I, I think we're in this for a little bit until we can see an actual return, I appreciate Councilman LeBron's sentiment on turning a little small boat or a big ship, this is a big ship that has endured a storm like nobody has ever seen before, and so it's going to take time for us to come out of it, and now is the time, and I think our superintendent knows our expectations, my expectation is excellence at all times, and I believe she understands that, and my vote will be yes tonight in the spirit of excellence.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions, or, in fact, comments rather, sorry. I do want to add a couple of talking points and make sure I'm on the record, I know my colleague, Board Member Bello stated this, but again, I don't think there's any difference between appointees and elected, if you take a look at how appointees get here, it's through the mayor, which means elections have consequences, so the people vote for the mayor, in essence, that's who the people put on this board, so I just want to make sure that's very clear, that the mayor is voted by the people, so if the people do not vote for the mayor that they want, I would encourage you to take a look in the mirror and ask the question, who is responsible for that? Right? Secondly, I think everyone here knows, by all means, I encourage you, I encourage everyone in the community to take this role, I encourage anyone to step up and take this role as chair, I don't need it, I'm doing this because I'm passionate about the district, I'm passionate about our kids, and if anyone applies that I'm doing this for any other reason, you are sadly mistaken, and I rest assure you, I think anyone that knows me knows that that is the case. And third, as, as it was mentioned by my Board Member Oliver, pre-pandemic, we had tremendous momentum, COVID happened, is a reality, but what I will say is, and I've said this to the superintendent, and I've said this to everyone, this is the momentum year, right? Effort, good, but we're going to reward results, that's, that's as simple as that, right? We have a goal, we have a plan in place, and by the end of the, end of the academic year, I expect us to be tracking towards those goals in a very aggressive way, and as it relates to the sustainability of this, having a leader in place is going to assure us that we meet that, meet those goals. I think the superintendent is a professional, she's mature enough to understand our expectations of her, and I expect her to deliver. With that being said, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education approve the Superintendent Leslie Torres Rodriguez request to extend her employment contract for additional one-year term through June 30th of 2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Nay. Abstentions? The ayes have it. Item 4.6, first reading, policy 2251, data dashboard. Vice Chair Johnson?
I'm sorry, I had to take a deep breath after that vote, felt good. All right, so our first reading tonight, which is priority number four, skillful staff effective operations, policy 2251, I believe here, district data dashboard was adopted in 2009, since this time, the State Department of Education has introduced comprehensive accountability system with specific metrics, the district strategic plan that reflects Data science and technology have progressed significantly. I had the opportunity to attend the cave, I guess, pre-retreat where the State Board of Education came and talked about this system, which will allow this information to help us progress in terms of our data. And their system is really, 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 really awesome. So some of the questions that we had, the revisions to the policy call for dashboards that relay data in alignment with the district strategic plan. And another question that we asked ourselves is, should the policy list specific metrics? Our next step, return to the policy committee for a second reading, then to the full board at October, at the October meeting. This concludes.
Thank you, Board Member Johnson. As this is the first reading, no votes required at this time. Moving along to section five, Casette Agenda. Items on the Casette Agenda are 5.2, Contract Continuation, International Institute for Restorative Practices. Item 5.6, Approval of Minutes from August 16th Board Meeting. Any comments, questions on the Casette Agenda? Do I have a motion to take the Casette Agenda up as one item?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Now that the Casette Agenda is one item, do I have a motion to vote on the Casette Agenda?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The September 20th, yep, sorry, the September 20th Hartford Board of Education meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and enjoy the rest of your evening.